Great, good evening, everyone. This is Jean McPeters and we will be starting in just a few minutes. Meanwhile, as you can see from the screen, if you think that you are going to want to answer a question tonight, if you follow these directions, you will be put in the queue to ask a question. And Nan, on the second slide, it says how you can see the speakers in a larger format on your screen if you want to. If you think we would look better in giant size. And then Nan, please go back to the first one. Okay, as soon as it's seven o'clock and we have a few more people in, we will get started. Thank you all for coming. Okay, I'm going to. Great. Good evening, everyone. This is Jean McPeters. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Commission. And as of right now, I think we have about forty-four, forty-five people in the waiting room. We're coming in. We're going to start this evening with a half an hour presentation. And but if you think.
I think we lost the sound mark.
Yeah, I lost my sound.
Yep, no sound.
I'm not sure he heard us.
I think he has, yes.
Okay.
Can you hear now?
Can you hear now?
Somebody muted.
Okay. Okay, so sorry about that. We lost the sound for a second. If you want to be put in the queue to ask a question this evening, go down to the bottom of the screen. You'll see either raise hand or reactions and hit raise hand. And you'll be put in the queue according to when you clicked the number near your screen. And at the, and when we conclude the half hour, I'm going to say that people who've entered here, we only advertise this as being on Zoom. So if you want to ask a question, you can't do that here tonight. We're only taking questions on Zoom. If you. But you can come to the other meeting if you want to ask a question. Because we didn't advertise this as being a full meeting. We advertised it as being on Zoom only. So I'm going to start our, our. Our presentation. So Nan, would you go to the next slide? And here it is. So the zoning commissions this evening, making this presentation this evening, the members, as you can see, are myself, Ernie Dale's, Michelle Brown, Barbara Panuth, Bill Murray, Bill Murray, Bruce Murray, Bill must be your brother, and Bill Padulka. Michelle, Barb, and Bill are all members of the planning board. Our liaison is Tim Murray, who's on the town council. He's our liaison to the town council. Nan Stolzenberg and Rick Letterer Barnes have been our consulting team. Next slide, please. Want to talk a little bit about some background. So the town board gave us a charge a year ago in March to do the following: examine the conditions that are existing, encourage public input, recommend boundaries for the districts and appropriate regulations, make a preliminary report to the town board, hold public hearings on that preliminary report, and submit a final report. We are nowhere near a public hearing yet. These are public information meetings. We will hold public hearings when we get to the stage of having finished the second draft of a law. And the most important part really is that a zoning commission has to have, excuse me, a municipality has to have a zoning commission to adopt the first zoning law. Next slide, please. So the history of this is that back in January 2021, the town adopted a new, a new town comprehensive plan. They appointed and received a report from the Land Use and Economic Development Task Force. That was appointed in 2020 and they got their report in 2021. In, as I said, in March, the zoning commission was appointed and I think the consultant team was hired in April. The zoning commission, we've been meeting twice a month, sometimes occasionally three times a month since April of 2021. We received the first draft from consultants back in December. And that's all been posted on the website. We've had public input meetings too in December of 2021 and we're having them again this week. And what we've accomplished in that time since December and now is we have gotten in a huge number of questions. There are something like, I think, 215 questions answered on the town website that we received. And there were many more because there were many duplicates. And we have edited articles one through four for your review. Our entire direction comes out of the town's comprehensive plan. Next, please. So the comprehensive plan, everything in this law has to be consistent with that. And the zoning reflects the community plans from that plan. And that really is right in the purpose statement, which is, which is Article One. Next slide, please. So this is what's in the plan. It's very much, and you can all read, so I'm not going to read you everything, but I'm going to talk a little bit about the things that we very, we spent a lot of time on. How do we promote small businesses and home-based businesses? How do we promote farming and farm diversification? How do, how do we encourage affordable housing here and protect farmland? How do we protect our environment? And I think we spent a lot of time particularly thinking about water because we are, you know, all of us are on wells and the aquifers are critically important to us. How do we prevent noise and light pollution? And how do we guide commercial building design? How do we promote community resiliency? Next slide, please. So these are the proposed articles. These are about, in terms of the length of the proposed law, it's about half. But this is in a ways the more, this is the meat of the zoning proposal. So there's a purpose statement which comes very much out of that comprehensive plan. We moved the definitions from the end because we thought it was really important that people understand what we're all talking about, that everyone is using the same definitions. So we moved them up to the front to be Article Two. And we have tried to define every term in the user table. If you find that we're missing one, you let us know and you get a jar of my dilly beans. That's how that works. So my dilly beans, my home canned dilly beans.
Just like Ronald Reagan.
Yeah, no, no, those were jelly beans. These are different. These are green beans with dill. They're entirely different.
Okay.
No sugar.
Dilly beans.
Dilly beans, not jelly beans.
Jelly beans.
Okay, moving along. Moving away from dilly beans onto districts. We had to define what are the districts. The vast majority of the town is ag and rural. But there are hamlet districts. You all kind of know the hamlets that exist here. And then there are uses and dimensions table, which someone like Ernie, who's on our zoning commission and is an architect and knows a lot about, because whenever he's designing a house, he has to think about those uses and dimensions tables in various zoning laws in the areas that he does. Next, please. So this Article One is this purpose statement. And then I also want to say that Article Three contains purpose statements for each district. It tries to define what the districts are like. Next slide, please. So this is some of the things that are in the, again, in the purpose statements, promoting small businesses and home occupations. Home occupations are allowed everywhere. Go on, next district, next slide, protecting farmland, farmland and open spaces as. Next slide, please. And protecting, as we said, the environment and water. Next slide, please. Article Two, these are the definitions. And I really encourage you to just look at those. I'm not going to, we're not going to go through them all. There are, I don't know, ten to twelve pages of them, I think. But they define what they are so that when people are trying to talk about something, we're all using the same language. Next slide, please. Article Three. And Article Three, I think.
I was, I was Article Two.
Oh, I'm going to go back to Article Two. I'm so sorry. I just wrote over. I just whizzed right through it, but we're going to go back and have Ernie do Article Two. Sorry. We'll be better on Thursday because this is like a, we're like rehearsing. Okay.
Is this the new Article Three though? Because definition for Article Two, right?
Yes, and that's what he's going to talk about. No, the definitions used to be Article Eleven or something.
Now it's Two, right?
Yes. Ernie?
So Article Two are the definitions. The definitions will explain themselves. We spent a fair amount of time going over these items one by one, trying to pick up. Trying to pick up. You all right there?
If you're in the town hall, then please mute or turn your speaker off. Thank you.
All right. So we endeavored to make things as clear as we possibly could, removed a bunch of acronyms, words that were considered to be jargon or loosely defined. And generally tried to tighten things up so that when we're actually using this document, you can figure out what every word means. I don't suggest you need to read the entire definition section, but I do think it's very important when you're looking at the rest of the document to refer to the definitions from time to time because they do give an awful lot of additional information. These definitions are not complete. We are still editing as we go forward. As we move through the rest of the document, more terms were added. And in fact, some may actually disappear. But at this point, it's a working document, so we're welcome any questions or comments that anyone may have. That's it.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. I am going to say before we go on to the next part of this that if you think you're going to want to ask a question after we complete this, please go to the bottom of your screen and hit reactions or raise hand and raise your hand and you will be put into a queue in the order in which your hand has been raised. I'm going to go on to Bill.
Actually, no, you're going on Barb. Thank you, Nan, for advancing the slide. I'm going to, I'm going to address Proposed Article Three, which deals with districts. So you see the different districts listed here on the slide. As Jean made reference to a bit, all districts, all of these districts that are listed here allow agricultural uses, home-based occupations and businesses of various types. And you'll see more details about these various uses in these districts that Bill will discuss in Article Four in a few moments. The hamlet districts listed here facilitate a higher density of development than you'll find in the agricultural rural district. So the hamlets encourage a mixture of housing types and promote these areas, the hamlets, as vital town centers. And again, businesses of various types are allowed in all districts. The focused commercial district includes locations that are along Route 79. You'll see a map in a moment where larger scaled community civic and commercial uses have developed over time. And that's being encouraged as a focused commercial district. Having a focused commercial district is intended to discourage further commercial sprawl from occurring all along Route 79. And remember again that businesses of various types are allowed in all districts. The larger scaled businesses would be in the focused commercial district. The overlay district, the water resource and flooding overlay district encompasses all of the underlying zones or districts and adds additional standards in the areas covered in the overlay. So where the water overlay district exists, the standards from both the underlying district listed here and the overlay district apply. So you have two sets of standards applying in a very limited area. The purpose, though, of the water resource and flooding overlay district is to protect critical water resources and critical ecological systems that are associated with water in the town of Caroline, including streams and their associated riparian areas, including groundwater, wetlands, floodplains, and water bodies adjacent to streams. You'll find detailed language about how the overlay would be implemented back in the first draft from December 28th zoning law because we haven't gotten to revisions and review of that in the zoning commission yet. So that article was Article Four in the December draft. It will be a differently numbered article in this current draft that we're working with now. But the zoning commission has not worked on revising that language. So that'll be coming in the coming weeks. Based on the current language in the December draft in Article Four, the water resource overlay language says that whenever a proposed new building envelope cannot be cited outside the water resources and flooding overlay, then and only then, an abbreviated site plan review process would be required. And that would be conducted by the town's review board. What would trigger the process is someone filing a building permit application or filing for a subdivision of the parcel. And then the town, town code enforcement officer would verify whether the project would need abbreviated site plan review or not, i.e. is it within the water resource overlay? If the building envelope is not in the overlay, no additional review would be needed other than the building permit as currently required to build in the town. Next slide, please. So some of the changes from the December draft to the current draft that's available on the website now involve the different zoning districts in terms of where the hamlets are mapped and what they're called and what their boundaries are and what the boundaries of the water resource overlay are. So the map that shows the various proposed zoning districts is available on the zoning commission website. Also, paper copies are available at the town clerk's office and a larger format map is on display in the town hall atrium. The map shows all the proposed districts as well as all the parcels in the town of Caroline. So if you look in detail at the map, and I acknowledge you can't see parcels on this map on the slide now, but if you look at it on the website or any of those paper copies, you'll be able to see where your particular parcel is located in relation to the various proposed districts as they're proposed at this point in time. So the zoning commission welcomes your comments about the zoning district map and the boundaries that are proposed at this point. The map is still a draft and it may be revised based on your comments and based on further discussion by the zoning commission. Some of the changes that were made from the December map, just briefly, West Slatorville and Slatorville Springs were separated into two hamlets. In the December version, it was just all of Slatorville. Part of the purpose for doing that was to include the farmland between the two, between West Slatorville and Slatorville Springs in the agricultural rural district. The Beesmer Hamlet, which is the green stuff kind of on your left, was expanded to include additional areas along Route 79 and Snyder Hill in response to comments that we received by residents in those areas and in anticipation of future housing demand. And then Brooktondale and Center Brooktondale were distinguished. So that's kind of the brownish area there. Brooktondale and Center Brooktondale were distinguished as having somewhat different characteristics with Center Brooktondale being more mixed use and Brooktondale being more residential. Next slide, please. Other changes were made to the overlay district boundaries. The December draft included a forest core overlay to address forest resource protection, but that was removed and is no longer being considered by the zoning commission. The proposed forest core overlay was eliminated because, on balance, the environmental benefits that would be gained by having a forest core overlay would be relatively limited in comparison to the potential burden of restrictions for town residents, particularly given the significant private and public forest resources that already have some level of protection in the town of Caroline. The size of the water resource and flooding overlay that you see here was reduced, especially along Six Mile Creek, in an effort to balance environmental benefits gained in comparison to the potential burden of review and approval process, as I talked about before, for a building envelope that would occur within the water resources overlay. So on this map that you see, the pink color indicates those areas that were removed from the December version. And the gray areas show the overlay currently in the new draft. Again, just as a reminder, the water resources and flooding overlay is intended, among other benefits, to reduce erosion, which can be a significant problem for town of Caroline residents in the form of lost topsoil, land or property being washed away and threatened septic systems and leach fields. And also to protect the quality of local aquifers critical for drinking water. So the water resource overlay plays an important environmental and societal benefit for the town. Next slide, please. Various sources of existing data from federal, state, and county data serve as the basis for the water resources and flooding overlay. And the overlay includes buffers on streams and inline water bodies, wetlands, and flood zones. So that's why you saw the gray area and that's what it encompasses in the previous slide. So next, Bill is going to provide an overview of Proposed Article Four on the uses and dimensions within the zoning districts that I just discussed.
Okay, thanks, Barb. So in many ways, the Article Three, which is the maps, and Article Four, which is the uses table and the dimensions table sort of form the heart and core of the zoning document. So it tells you sort of, you know, where and what and how big. As the zoning commission reviewed the draft from December, our revisions in general have moved in the direction of making more uses allowed in more districts and allowing larger size structures as well. They are important, these dimensions and these uses. And so that would be definitely an important place for some more public input and feedback. You know, as we looked at these, we considered the character of the district. We thought about the kinds of things that we thought residents would want to do and try to consider the impacts of various uses on the neighborhood. And that's how we came up with what you will see in a few minutes in the use table. Another thing that we worked on was to clarify about home occupations. It's come up before in the discussion. But, you know, a home occupation really is any business that takes place on a residential property. The key feature is it has to be sort of secondary, that the main use and feel and operation of the property is as a residence. But really, any business enterprise is allowed as long as it remains secondary in function to the property as a residence. Next slide, please. So here's an example page from the use table. And I will, of course, not pretend that anybody can read what's on here. But what the use table is, is across the top, there is a listing of all the different districts. Each page will have that listing of districts on the top. The leftmost column will eventually give some references into the zoning document of relevant sections. The second column is the uses. And then after that, under each potential, each proposed zoning district are the review requirements of the various uses. And we'll talk about those in just a minute. One important point is that if a use is not listed in the use table, it is not allowed in the town. On the other hand, if it is in the use table, it definitely is allowed, at least somewhere. And it is, of course, one of the reasons that the use table is so long is, of course, an effort to make sure that it's complete. But of course, even trying to be complete, there were concerns about missing certain activities people would want to do that they should be able to do. So there's some general categories. You know, food and beverage covers a lot of things. Offices can cover a lot of kinds of things. Retail sales, not otherwise listed. Service businesses, otherwise not listed, are all entries in the use tables. These are very general categories designed to catch activities folks will want to do. Now, when you look at the use table, there'll be a lot of letter codes in the various cells. If you see, and I'll describe what these mean in a second, if you see a P or ASPR or SPR or SUP, that use is allowed. If it has an X, that use is still allowed, but only allowed as a home occupation. As far as the details, if it has a P, as it describes there in the site, it's permitted no review board process. If a use has a P in itself, that means that there's no review by the review board. You will still need a building permit, any other permits that the state or some other agency might require, but the town is not going to review the proposal in any way. The ASPR and SPR are both flavors of site plan review. And the town currently has a site plan review proposal. New to this is the abbreviated site plan review. Site plan review looks at how a use is situated on a site. It does not look at the use itself, so that review is blind to the actual use, but does look at how that use is configuring the property. Abbreviated site plan review is intended to be a short, one-meeting, quick sort of one-and-done check on certain things. And Barb mentioned that, for example, in the case of a building envelope having to be cited in the water resources overlay. Site plan review, the full site plan review basically applies to commercial projects. An example of the sort of thing that might come up in site plan review is if a business is going in, maybe it's a bakery, maybe it's something else. They're putting up a sign, they're putting up a driveway cut for where the car is going to come in and out, and they're building a parking lot. Site plan review would look at the sign placement to make sure that it didn't block visibility. It would look at where the entranceway is to make sure that that, you know, satisfied public safety needs for how people get into and out of the property. It would look at whether parking lot seems to be large enough to accommodate expected traffic. So of course, folks aren't forced to park on neighbor's lawns or whatever. So the idea is simply to put a check on various things, to take a look at it. Not the control of the use, but to just make sure that it fits in with the neighborhood. The last code, SUP, site, special use permit, is a review that can and does look at the use. So that's how it differs from site plan review. So there are some uses that potentially have impacts on the area. And it might be a fine use to have, but some limits or conditions need to be placed on the use. An example would be a car wash. Car washes use and dispose of lots of water. Since we don't have public water here, everything's on a well. For a car wash, there might well have to be an aquifer study done. And based on that, there might be a limit on how much water the facility could withdraw. So that would be a change in the use that the review board could require under a special use permit. So special use permits are used only for those, you know, uses that potentially have significant impacts that might need to be changed by variation in the use. Next slide, please. The dimensions table is the other main table in Article Four. Again, compared to December draft, we moved in ways that, you know, sort of in some ways relaxed requirements. There is no longer, for example, a setback requirement on residences or buildings. We reduced the minimum lot size in hamlets. The sizes in this table weren't just plucked out of thin air. They are based on the mean size of parcels in those hamlets currently. The second to last row of this table is the building size. And in general, those sizes were increased compared to the December draft. And I want to point out that the size means the footprint. That is, how much land area does the building take up? So it is not the retail floor area. If you have a multi-story building, then it's going to have more area than the building footprint. You can also have more than one building on a parcel. And so, you know, that is again, is the footprint of a single building. The last line of the table is a separate requirement of the maximum total footprint of all the buildings. Next slide, please. Okay, so we know that Article Four has a lot in it. It's very dense with these tables and other information. And so we tried to to make some steps, take some steps to make it easier to understand. So there's additional readers aid boxes that do extra work to explain some of what's in the text. Hopefully, we've done a good job. Feel free to commit on those too. Anything that will help this document more readable and understandable is what we're looking for. We understand that the average lot size formulation that's being used in the agricultural rural district is a little difficult to get one's head around. And so we added information to help explain, particularly if a parcel is being, say, subdivided a little bit now, and then a few years later, it's subdivided again, and a few years later, it's subdivided again. We sort of walk through the steps that would take place, how that subdivision occurs and how things are kept track of so that the number of allowed subdivisions is is recorded, duly recorded, everyone knows what it is. And then there's also language that was added to how that monitoring will take place. There's both a reader's aid box and a new section in that, in the draft that discusses how that is kept track of. And one key point when discussing housing sort of allowances, those are all based on either minimum lot size or average lot size, depending if you're in the ag rural district, it's average lot size. Other districts, it'll be a minimum lot size compared to the net buildable acreage of a parcel. And the net acreage is the acreage of the parcel with some pieces taken out. And those pieces are steep slopes, greater than 25%, and the water resources overlay. Finally, there's a section in Article Four talking about density bonuses. And density bonuses are a way to increase the number of allowed dwellings that can be built or the number of allowed subdivisions, depending on how the project is taking place. And a developer is allowed to develop additional house sites if they provide, want to provide some, take advantage of some incentives that we are offering. So in the plan, affordable housing or senior housing or extra energy efficiency or allowing public access to a nice area on the land are all examples of of a possible incentive. They're voluntary. If the developer would like to build more houses and is willing to accept the incentive, then that's what happens. But those are all voluntary. What we, the zoning commission, are looking for is feedback on, do we have the right incentives in the document? Do we have the right level of incentive in the document? You know, so please take a look at that section in Article Four. Next slide, please. So where we go from here? Now, we have spent much time reviewing Articles One through Four. We are working our way through now the rest of the document. At some point, there will be some additional public information meetings on those revisions. We have gotten some feedback on the site plan review process from the review board and will be processing that. Once we've gone through all that, as Jean described earlier, we'll be preparing a final draft, if we are a full draft. And if we are happy enough with that full draft, that it becomes our preliminary report, it will be presented to the public in a public hearing. And so these words are important. And I knew there was, I heard there was some confusion as to whether this is a public hearing tonight or not. We are carefully using public information meeting, the word meeting, to be something like this. A public hearing and then the email announcements will say hearing, the signs around town will say hearing, is a different formal process, basically required by and regulated by the state of New York. There will be official notice in newspapers, there will be a reporting secretary, and it will not be a question and answer format. It will be simply a time to receive comments from the public. So after the zoning commission holds a public hearing sometime in the future, and you will note, there are no dates on this slide, because this process will take as long as it takes until we feel we have a good product at the end. Once we have had a public hearing and made revisions to the zoning plan, based on that, it will be submitted to the town board. At that point, the zoning commission ceases to exist. The document is in the town board's hand. They have a chance to review it, work on it. Will hold their own public hearing, so a second public hearing. And there are some other formal steps, legal steps that have to take place. A state environmental quality review process takes place. The county has a chance to review the document. And once all of those required steps have been taken place, will come the time for the town board to either vote to adopt or not adopt the law and follow the other legal steps depending on that. So that concludes what we have to present. I'm going to turn this back over to Jean now, who will describe how we're doing our question and answer session.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Ernie and Barb and Bill for doing this presentation. Also, I want to thank Nan Stoltenberg, our consultant, who has been extremely valuable during this process. Nan, would you put up that second slide that explains again how people can raise their hand if they want to speak this evening? As she's putting that up, basically, if you go to the bottom of your Zoom screen, it might say raise hand, or it might say reactions, and then you hit reactions or raise hand, and you will be put into the queue and you will ask people questions. Or you will ask, your speaker will be turned on, you'll be able to ask a question. So that's how you do that. Michelle Brown from our zoning commission is going to time things. And thirty, everyone will have thirty, excuse me, will have three minutes to speak. At two minutes and thirty seconds, Michelle will say thirty seconds. And and we will ask you then to begin to wrap up your comments. Members of the zoning commission and as well as Nan will be able to respond for up to three minutes, depending on whether or not it needs a response. Hope that's all understandable. And we will go to the first participant, Mark. Can you do that?
Hello, do I get to? Oh, no, you, I can, but you can hear me?
Yes, we can, Emily. Emily Adams?
Yes, I got a chance to go through this thing online today. And I was really impressed. I think the reader's aids boxes were helpful. And I could really see there was so much work put into this, and I'm really impressed and really thankful for all the time and effort that you have all put into doing this. I didn't have a whole lot of questions yet because a lot of the the concerns probably won't, you know, come up until later when we really dig down in the details. But I had a couple sort of general questions. One was all the 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 hamlets that have been defined now. I noticed that basically they all got kind of the same treatment except for Beesmer and that other one. And I was wondering why the Slaterville, no, the Hamlet West Slaterville. So West Slaterville and Beesmer got like less stuff. Is that because they're smaller? Or were there other concern considerations?
Would anyone on the, could you like to answer that question?
I'm happy to unless someone else wants to.
Thank you, Bill.
So Emily, again, as we looked at districts, we tried to look at sort of the purpose and character of the zoning districts when deciding uses. And both Beesmer and West Slaterville were to us more residential in in character currently. And so the allowed uses tried to sort of be in conformance with that. And so you will find that they have less, you know, fewer allowed commercial sort of things. There are some important differences. Slaterville Springs, because of its access along Route 79, very favorable for business opportunities, has a large and existing businesses with the gas station there, has larger commercial sizes allowed. And then there's a little, little bit different mix between central Brookton Dale being sort of a more intensely mixed commercial residential versus the outer part of Brookton Dale. But yeah, other than that, the biggest difference is Beesmer and West Slaterville compared to the others.
Okay, so something like, like there's that delivery has been converted into those little shops and businesses up there. And so they would probably not be able to continue, or would they be grandfathered in? Or would they, if it's a residence there, then they would count as a, like a home business and it'd be okay? Or how does that work?
So all existing uses are grandfathered in. So yeah, there's, so there's a whole section, again, we are in the, that's in the later part of the zoning document, we haven't gotten to yet. But there is a, you know, nonconforming use is the name of the actual article, but sort of grandfather is the common term. So yeah, if a business is currently existing, even if it does not conform either with the size or the uses in that district, it's allowed to continue and even expand up to some number, which currently is 25% in the document, but it could be a larger number. So any rate, yes, they would continue. What indeed would be true, though, is that if someone wanted to do that next door without a variance, they couldn't do that on a parcel that did not already have that business, but they certainly can continue as they are.
Thank you. Mark, who's next?
Okay. Bruno is next.
Bruno Schickel, and who's after that?
Ellen Harrison.
Okay, so Bruno. Mark is unmuting you, so you should be able to speak in a second.
I'm sorry, just so you know, I had to hit a button.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We'll tell people that.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruno. Please go ahead.
So a couple of things that I would just say is that Caroline's a small town. There's a little more than 3,500 people. And we lost 35 people in the last census. Census people, it's a relatively, you know, not well-heeled town, and there's a lot of people that are struggling. I think it's a big picture. You need to remember there's septic regulations in place, there's stormwater regulations in place, there's wetland regulations in place, there's a lot of environmental regulations already in place that are providing the environmental protection. And Caroline has been evolving for 200 years. And it has, you know, in the old days, they farmed to the top of the hills. And there were lots and lots of little farms. And then there was this great consolidation. And then the farms became bigger, and now a lot of the farms, most of the farms have gone out of business. And the bottom line is, we've been adapting. And I think the problem that I have with zoning is that it interrupts the natural ability of a town's people to adapt to the current conditions of the day. And I think it's a real loss, and you're going to lose a lot of creativity and innovation that can happen. And I just think that people, I just think it's a small town. This is an extremely complex, overly burdensome, very, very complex. It's going to be extremely expensive to enforce and to deal with for the the public as well. It's going to be a direct attack on affordability in housing. There is no question about it. It's going to require much more land to build a house. It's going to require much more burdensome regulations and the like to deal with it. And you're you're creating much of the town, and most of the town is going to be a preserve for large lot suburban McMansions. And that's what you're promoting. It's going to have the opposite effect of saving and protecting and keeping more open land. It's going to mean that the land is going to be used up faster, not not smaller.
You have 30 seconds left.
Thank you very much. And I also am very concerned that zoning has always been used historically to segregate and discriminate, certainly along economic lines. And I think the result of this, as it's currently constructed, is going to do just that. You are going to segregate the town along economic lines. I think it's shameful. I don't think you should do it. I think it's completely unfair.
Your time is up. That's three minutes.
Thank you, Bruno. I didn't hear a question in there, but is there anyone on the zoning commission who wants to discern the question and wants to reply?
I had a quick comment on just a couple of things, most of the census data and some other stuff, because that claim is made before. There's a real problem comparing the 2020 census data, the 2010 census data with student population. In 2020, as we all know, there was a COVID epidemic and students left the town and were not counted in the census, whereas in 2010, they would have been. So it's better to look at housing starts, which have remained fairly steady. True, family sizes have declined, so the population probably is not increasing as as fast as 20 years ago with the same number of housing starts. But we continue to have housing starts. I think that's really more relevant than that census data, which again, is not able to be compared. It'll basically, Bruno, the zoning commission has considered the issues you raised. I'm going to leave time for others to respond if they want. But, you know, we've put in the ability to have, you know, affordable housing, all kinds of different lot sizes, small lots in the hamlets. It could even be a couple tenths of an acre in the ag rural district. We allow different lot sizes. So it just is hard to understand the real whether the claims you make are all true. We are also aware of the historical segregation. And so our consultant has been very careful to avoid that. So if any other commission wants to comment.
I will comment that I very much agree with what Bill said. These are issues that we have thought of long and hard. We're trying, as we said, to be consistent with the, with the plan, with the, with the plan that was adopted and with the purposes that we have, that we have proposed. Thank you. Next speaker?
Ellen Harrison and then Renee Farrell, and Ellen is unmuted.
Ellen, you may go ahead. Good evening. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we are. Thanks, Ellen.
First, I want to say I have such tremendous appreciation and respect for the work you all are putting in. I think it's being very thoughtful, intelligent, time consuming. And clearly, based on what you're telling me about some of these revisions, you've done a lot of listening to concerns that people have. And for the most part, I probably agree. I wanted to talk, is this a time I can talk about the maps?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to talk very specifically about an one particular area. I appreciate that large commercial is being put into concentrated areas along 79 so that it won't sprawl across. I think that's sensible. A lot of the zoning district boundaries are are based largely, I think, on what is now, how the town is. And I think that makes a lot of sense. And in, however, in terms of the large commercial, there's one particular spot where I think the map is really asking for trouble. It is proposed to be large commercial across the street from the Caroline School. We have a speed limit there, unless that changed since the last map. I don't think so. I couldn't tell on this tonight.
No, we didn't. We'd heard your comment, but we had not changed.
So I just want to urge and ask if you, if you haven't, you haven't gotten to it yet. I urge you, I don't think large commercial belongs across the street. I just don't think we want a store that's drawing a lot of traffic across the street from the school, school buses. And I also think that the crossing of Thomas Road to Lounsbury is a very popular bicycle route. And if bicycles are trying to cross 79 while potentially facing somebody turning onto 79 from a commercial establishment along the, along the road to their left there or right, depending.
You have 30 seconds left.
So I, my, my question would be, why did you zone it, propose it that way? And are you open to reconsider? And are you open to reconsidering? Thank you very much.
Does any, do any of the members want to speak to that? I'll speak to that and see if anyone else wants to chime in. I think we zoned it as that because it has historically been a commercial area and also because the road is relatively wide and flat there. I, I had not thought of what you had brought up about the crossing there before. And I think you have a point. I have certainly, I think all of us out here have seen people speed down the hill on the way from Ithaca to, towards the Caroline School. And as we're trying to cross, you know, like even make a turn, sometimes it's like, really? Why are you going 90 miles an hour here? But so we will certainly consider that and we will consider any other areas that people want to bring to our attention as we're going forward. So either that they, you know, that they think should be zoned in a different way, or that the, that the border should be different than they currently are. Anyone else? Here are no other responses. I think it's Renee Farrell next.
Yep. Renee, go ahead and try to unmute. I, I've asked you to unmute.
Renee?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, great. I'm going to try to be quick. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to thank you guys again for just your careful, thoughtful. And you know, these incredibly responsible zoning guidelines. I've been watching you, you know, and your slow articulation, you know, week by week, but it's, it's really evolved in a way that I just think is positive and really, I think, intends to preserve not only our rural character, but also, you know, the environmental and fragile state, you know, of where we live. I just wanted to make a couple of quick points positively. I'm, I'm really thrilled to see that the Bessemer residential area has stayed pretty true. I will add that, you know, from Beesimer all the way up through to Snyder Hill is about a square mile from my estimation. And I, you know, I think that's guesstimating from the car, from my own car. And I, about a year ago, I counted approximately 100 homes in that area. I would guess that there are probably more now. And so I, I just think that that's a really positive addition to, you know, your consideration of these, of these guidelines. I did have a quick question in regards to commercial. I'm so happy to see the evolution of your articulation and understanding that there are so many people in our town who want to nurture small businesses. And I would agree that that's so incredibly important for us to grow. I do want to also acknowledge that our tax base may have to consider, you know, maybe a little bit of a larger, not huge, but a little bit of a larger commercial zone. And I just, I know at one point I heard someone talk about East Slaterville. And I wanted to know, I realized that that is potentially good farmland, but I've just, that's a quick question. The other question is, I was kind of not annoyed, but actually panicked when I saw that a potential small business might be a car wash. I, I think if you do some further research, you will find that, that car washes right now are an environmental disaster waiting to happen. And so I would urge you to do a little bit more research on that. And then the only other thing, what I, I would ask you to do is to maybe meet a little more often. You have 30 seconds, 30 seconds left. And I'll, and I'll end there, which means, you know, wow, if, maybe you could meet just a little bit, you know, a little bit more often. Just to kind of get this going, I'd love to see that. Thanks, Nan, for your really wise advice. I've really enjoyed learning so much from, from what you've been saying over the last, you know, several months. So anyway, thanks again.
Thank you, Renee. Does anyone on the commission wish, wish to respond? I can, I will say a few things and try to drive in. I think small businesses and home businesses were critically important. Several of us on the commission have home businesses. And I know for myself, one of the things that, you know, we really are hoping the town will be able to do is get us all better internet services and things like that, because that's a problem for a lot of people trying to establish home businesses. Thank you, Cal, for turning on the lights. You probably look like we're disappearing here. We haven't really talked much about East Slaterville and thank you for bringing that attention. We'll come back to that. I don't think anyone really thinks that, that we think that a car wash is a good idea, which is why I think it's a special use permit.
Special use permit.
Yeah, which would be, would, I think it would be difficult because you would have to really show that you could find enough water to do it. So I kind of, plus I think all of us have dirty cars out here. Is that not the case? Right. So, but thank you and thank you for, for your thoughts. We'll think again about East Slaterville. Who's next?
Looks like Will Lawrence.
Hi, Will. Will, let's see if you're unmuted.
Give it a try, Will. Okay, good. You're good.
Okay, Will, please speak. Hi, Will.
Alyssa Betts is next.
Hi. My connection isn't great, so I've missed some of the things that Jean and Bill have said. I, I have several questions and maybe I need to submit the questions in more detail. But one has to do with the water resources overlay. I saw the slide you put up. I tried to listen to the April 26th video. It's, it's not really clear which maps you're using. And I'm curious how you intend to keep things up to date. I know the FEMA map is not final. And it's not expected to be final till 2024. So there's that question of how did the, how will you, which maps did you take which information from? And how will you keep it up to date is a question I have. And who will do the inspection? So those are questions I have. And also I read the part about the average density. And I don't see why you are subtracting out the water resources overlay. I think that's what I read. That to me means you could be effectively, I don't know, making so much land unavailable, but people, if you have three acres of land, I think that gives you plenty. If, it's like this, there's a little logic, quick logic. For example, if you can put a septic in a well on one acre and you're trying to go for an average of three acres, then why do you need to exclude potentially an acre of buffer from that three acre piece of land where someone might just be enjoying watching the animals, you know, run through their yard.
You have 30 seconds left.
I'm done.
Okay. Does anyone want to respond to Will?
And I can give a few thoughts. I don't know if anybody else does. And I think, you know, Nan may want to contribute as well to help correct me what I have wrong. What I can say is in terms of the water resources overlay, I think the data sources were listed in the slide that was up earlier. And so in particular, Will, for wetlands, we're relying on the county data set. So it includes the county map wetlands and the DEC wetlands and the, any, anything the federal government has already recognized. So those are the data sets in there. Indeed, you're right about the flood zone stuff. So, you know, we are, to the extent we can, using the latest proposed 2022 flood zones. In terms of keeping things up to date, you know, once these maps are adopted into the zoning law, those are the maps. And then at some point, they could or should be updated, but it won't be an automatic, because that, as, you know, this is where Nan will need to help. As far as I know, that would essentially call for another public hearing. That would be a change to a law. So it will happen periodically, but it would be in a definite intentional process to say five years from now or 10 years from now, let's take another look at wetlands maps and flood zone maps. So that's on one. I'm not sure I understand your question of who will do the inspection. Some processes will happen by the code enforcement officer and some things will be done by the review board. And we're still working through, you know, who does, does what? I don't know what you meant for sure by inspection. But I think you're right. You may want to write some of these questions in for us. And lastly, and I don't know if Barb wants to help me here, but yes, first off, if, if a majority of a parcel, up to three quarters or more of a parcel winds up being in the water resources overlay or on steep slopes, there's an escape valve built into the law so that some of that land gets added back into the net buildable acreage. But the reason for removing it is basically because the water resources overlay are critical areas to protect. And so the idea is you probably shouldn't be building something there unless you actually have to. And so in your example, yes, that could be left, as you said, is a beautiful pristine area. And you've still got the other acre or two to build into. So that's the best answer I have on that one, but others folks may want to add into that.
Anyone? I hope that answers your question. The county was able to give us the 100 flood zones.
30 seconds left to that question.
Okay, the county was able to give us the 100-year flood zones that have come from the, from the feds that are not all published yet. And so our map maker was able to put those in for Caroline. And I know that people, no one on, in the town determines what a wetland is. That's determined by, I mean, if there was a fight, you go to the DEC and the DEC determines what's a wetland.
Can I just add one thing about the, the maps?
Do you want to add another three minutes to this?
No, I just have a one real quick thing to say is that I think it's a really healthy thing for the town not to let any land use regulations sit and not be reviewed periodically. So over time, I think it's really good for the town to keep, keep it up to date, to meet community needs. And as new data comes out from various state and county resources, the maps can always be updated. It would, as Bill said, it would have to go through the, a local law update to do that. But it's, it's certainly, if, if there's new information that comes out to meet a need, then those maps should and, and could be reviewed periodically.
Thank you. Who's the next speaker?
Alyssa Betts. And then after that, Cindy Kimmel.
Okay. And I will say once again, if you've gotten on late and you don't know how to get in the queue to ask a question, go to the bottom of your screen, hit reactions or raise hands and raise your hand and your name will be put in the queue. Thank you. So I think you're probably unmuted now and go ahead.
I believe I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any, any specific questions. I just have, want to make a general statement of my incredible respect for what the commission has done. The amount of careful work that they put into reworking and refining the proposed law in response to questions is, is quite amazing. Often, it's my understanding, often those questions have been based on a misunderstanding or a misinterpretation of the plan. And the commission's way of addressing those questions has been respectful and thorough. And I think it is obvious, especially in the changes in Article Four. I think it's the helpful, another helpful feature is the reader's aid boxes that often give clear succinct summaries of the contents of the individual sections. I'm astounded that they have, that they took, as I, according to my count, 25 pages in the section for use and interpretation of words. So that anyone reading this, if anyone with questions about this have very clear guidelines for understanding this carefully researched and drafted law. I think the plan strikes me as being precise, extremely detailed, but allowing for an incredible leeway when it comes to individual situations and circumstances. I think people who have questions understand that this is a draft and as a draft, it's subject to greater refinement and still open to input from the public. Something that has been the case during this whole process, an amazing process. When I hear that you people have been getting together two and three times a month, I, I know what it's like to be in those kinds of meetings. And that is an incredible amount of, of time to put in. But of course, the time between meetings also is, is extremely time consuming. So I really, I really think that people should respect what you're doing. That this process need not have been as contentious and painful as it has been so far. And I urge people to respect the good and really noble intentions of you as drafters. And I think people should appreciate the work that you have put into this. Thank you very much. We should all be extremely grateful for your work.
Lizzie, thank you so much. It's lovely to hear that. Thank you. There's nothing else I can say, but thank you very much. And I, I, I would want to add my, my thanks to several of our members who were the people who wrote all the answers to those questions, the 215 or so that are up on the town website. I am personally overwhelmed by their ability to do that and to do it between meetings. Thank you. I don't, anyone else want to say something?
Yeah, Jean, if I, if I could just jump in to emphasize a point that the previous speaker, Lizzie Ebbett, made in relationship to an earlier comment that I think Bruno Schickel made about the complexity of the law.
I said.
And we have had, we have heard people talk about complexity and talk about length. And to the comments that were made in the presentation, there is a lengthy section on definitions. And there's, you know, that Bill explained, there's a lot of attention played to, paid to reader's aid box. So yes, it is a long document. It's long in part to try to foster that kind of understanding of what all of the content of this draft zoning law means and how people can interpret it and use it and how it pertains to different situations. So it would be a shorter, shorter document if we took out those readers' understanding helps, but we don't intend to do that, at least for, for now. We don't intend to do that because we think it improves the usability and understandability of the document.
Thank you, Barbara. I think the next speaker is Cindy Kimmel.
Cindy Kimmel, and then Irene Wiser.
Okay.
Good evening. Hello.
Hi, Cindy.
How are you? I just had a couple of quick questions, starting in the beginning when we were talking about following the comprehensive plan and that is the plan that's been adopted by the town board. Can the plan itself be modified at some point in the future? I guess I wonder if there's, they're all documents, what as, as time evolves with these things, can we go back and amend or change the comprehensive plan? Would be one of my questions. The other question I have in reference to Article Four, when you're during your work and then you give it to the town board and the zoning commission is done, does the town board then have the opportunity to add or subtract and modify what you have given them? That would be my other question. Question regarding non-conforming and grandfathered. You mentioned they can make changes to 25%, up to 25%. 25% of what would be my question? Based on expansion, based on doing different things, exactly what could they or could not do in that? And my final comment would be to Renee's comment about commercial across the school. Yes, cars come down that hill pretty fast. Two things you could do, caution signs, more caution signs, so we could address that at the DOT level, and we could actually enforce the speed limit there. And that might resolve some of that issue. So those are my questions. I'll leave them out there for you to discuss.
Okay, I will answer several of these and then see what else somebody wants to add in. Yes, comprehensive plans can be modified. In fact, right now, the town of Dryden is in the process of redoing a plan. It's been a monumental work for a couple of years in Dryden, I think. Um, it's been a monumental work for a couple of years in Dryden, I think. Um.
And that's what we do.
And the town, and that is what the town board did, did here because there was, um, there was a town comprehensive plan, I think, written in.
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six, and then that was redone.
Aren't they supposed to be redone?
Yes, they, they are supposed to be redone because time changes. Um, yes, when the town, when the zoning commission finishes writing um, a plan that we're satisfied with. And we hold a public hearing and then we can come back from that public hearing and make perhaps minor adjustments. We then sign off on it and give it to the town board. The town board has absolute free rein. To make changes, to do whatever they want to, to with it. There's no time limit on that. They just, they can do what they want with it and then they have to have a public hearing. They could have public information meetings, they could have a lot of other things if they wanted to, but they are required by law to have a public hearing. Um. Non-conforming, it's really not in the articles that we're discussing tonight, so I am not as up on it as I should be. Does someone else, maybe Nan, want to answer that question? But it's not, that was in our first draft and we may be changing it. But Nan.
I'll just, I'll chip in quickly because I'm the one that, that garbled it in the slides. Um, it's an expansion in either size or intensity of use by up to twenty-five percent from where it is now. So a hundred and twenty-five percent of the current size is what currently in the, in the draft document and that number may be revised. And then I will take corrections from you.
I know, that, that is right. It's, it's the percentage of the existing use.
Okay, and then I think the fourth point was about. The commercial area near the school, and I think that was Alan Harrison who brought that forward, not Renee. Um, but you're right, there are other things that could be done. Um, you know, you could put in a. You could put in caution signs, you could put in more warning lights, you could have any number of things. All of that is dependent on the DOT. It's not a local issue. This is a state highway and so it's a, you have to get DOT approval to do those sorts of things. Thank you. Anyone else? Are we good? Um, Irene Wiser, I think that.
Yep, Irene is up, and then after that, I believe it's Holly Mandy.
Okay.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, and, and you know, I wish I could spend three minutes in the way that Lizzie did. Commending you guys for your work and, and your, your really thorough and patient way of, of going through all of this. Um, but I have questions, so I'll, I'll let what Lizzie said uh, stand, stand in for, for my commendations for your work as well. It's very much appreciated. Um, so I have a general question about how the hamlets were decided. Not so much, you know, by their name or, you know, look, but, but, but really, I, I remember the, the county did a study and, and talked about. Nodal development and walkability as the key features to, to sort of embrace and look to as growth occurs. And I, I think that there is a notion of uh, one mile walkability to a, a nodal center. And uh, you know, as I look at the Brookton Dale node or hamlet. I, I, I don't quite get the sense of the one mile radius walkability and I. So I want to encourage rethinking of, of how the, the boundaries of the hamlets are decided and um. Where nodes are going to be, and I want to speak in favor of nodes. And, and I appreciate that you've kind of expanded the idea of uh, some kinds of commercial happening within. Uh, what we might consider residential areas. I live along Brookton Dale Road where there happened to be commercial uh, developments. And I'll be really honest, I, I've benefited from them. I, I've benefited, you know, my car died in my driveway. I literally walked three doors down. Was able to go to a, a shop that, you know, worked on motorbikes and cars and say, hey, can you come help? And they did. Um, it, there, there are benefits and I, I just want people to appreciate that as a community, there's give and take and there's. People whose, whose livelihoods and jobs, you know, we want to keep jobs local, people local, keep people employed. Um, and so I, you know, I want to find the right balance of commercial with uh, with, you know, also respecting residential. Um, and so what gets handled through zoning versus through uh, refinance of our site plan. I, are, are things to be considered. Uh, in regards to car wash. Um, not only is the water withdrawal an issue, but the disposal of the water is a very big issue. There's all kinds of salt and oils and contaminants.
Uh, thirty seconds, thirty seconds left.
Oh shit, okay. Um, the water overlay, be careful of confinement layer in Slatorville. We've had, you know, already an incident where there was excavation. Uh, near Buffalo Road and we hit the confinement layer and the aquifer exploded. Um, we need to be really careful to limit excavation in the Slatorville area um, so that we don't hit the aquifer confinement layer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bye Irene. Um, I guess I would say, uh, I'll start on this and, and very briefly. I think one of the issues is our historical hamlets. Um, many of them are sort of linear uh, rather than um. Nodal circular. Um, and I think that's kind of part of the issue with like Brookton Dale. Um, it's, there's a big area of um. Primarily residential, but we're happy to look at those things again and welcome suggestions from people about what that would be. Um. We, we did use, as we thought about them, some of the things that um, that. A prime hamlet, for instance, has a, has a public building in it. For instance, the, the church in Caroline Center. Um, or, or Speedsville, which has several public buildings. Uh, those are, that's one of the distinguishing features of hamlets. Um, thank you for the note about uh, excavation and um. I'm, what I'm hearing is a lot of, we don't think car washes are a good idea. If that's the case, I think people should send in those notes. Um, anyone else want to speak to Irene?
Uh, just me briefly, no, no surprise. Um, yeah, quickly, again, since I gave the car wash example, I did not mean. In giving that example by not mentioning waste disposal, that we didn't talk about it as an issue, which we clearly did. Um, I just didn't happen to give it as an example in the slideshow. So apologies if that made it seem like, again, I wasn't talking about all the regulations in the document. That was an example of what a special use permit might do. And yes, it might also put limits on how the water is disposed or something, but anyway. Um, and I will second what Jean said. Um, you know. Brookton Dale is very linear because of how Valley Road, you know, comes through and Brookton Dale Road turns into Valley Road and. We thought, I think, as much as anything about sort of the feel and quality of the neighborhood. And didn't focus as much on like a one mile walkability thing, because you know. We expect it, the way housing trends are going, that there's going to be a fair amount of residential development in the northeast quadrant of Caroline. That's the reality. That's what's been happening, was likely to be happening. And so it made sense to consider that area as opposed to a simple little node as the Beesimer, you know, residential area. So those are some of the things that went into it. Other folks may want to add other thoughts.
Uh, there's thirty seconds left to the answer this question.
Um, Jean, I might just add quickly that I, I think the hamlets that you have identified are nodes even though they're not circular. Um, and while they may not all be walkable now, or maybe not in the future. Um, I think that in general, the planning rule of thumb for walkability is actually a half mile and not a mile. Um, but I, I think that, you know, we can certainly um, consider that, but um, I, 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 I certainly would consider. How you have the hamlets are, are already focused node.
And that would be three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, and the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Holly Mandy and then Josh Frazier.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, so I didn't really prepare anything to write up tonight, but I've been listening and I just have a few things I want to say. Um, I see no benefits here. Uh, the entire thing is too long. It's pushy and invasive. It's terrible. It started because of a Dollar General that was going to be placed too close to the board members homes, which the zoning commission will deny. Because they already have. And you, as Renee said, I, you definitely should not meet more frequently. That is a total bad idea. Um, you should have gotten rid of it months ago and. I don't know why also that you're comparing Caroline to Dambie zoning in Ithaca. It's a totally different town. We have totally different things around here and it just infuriate, infuriates me that you're comparing our town to those towns. We're nothing like them and we do not need to be like them. Just because you're friends with the guy over in Dambie and the board over there doesn't mean that you need to make us their town or try to compete with him. No zoning wanted, no zoning needed. We'll see you this Thursday at the Brookton Dale protest. And I do have one more question. What are the zoning commission's environmental expertise, knowledge? And where is the evidence and proof that Caroline needs zoning? Where? Where are the numbers? Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Um. I guess I disagree that it's too long, pushy and invasive. Um, I'm not thrilled about meeting more frequently myself. I feel like I'm dedicating a vast amount of my life to this, particularly in the summer, but we'll think about that. Um, I don't know that we're comparing ourselves to Danby or to anywhere else. Um. I think at the beginning of this process, we read a lot of local zoning laws because. Though I had attended a lot of meetings about zoning in the city of Ithaca because of my previous employment, and I think some other people like Ernie. Has, has worked with zoning in many communities because of his job as an architect. Um, we read them so that we would be knowledgeable about what we were doing. Um, so I don't think we're comparing ourselves, at least I have, I, I just don't understand what you're talking about in that case. Um. The zoning commission uh, was asked to do this by the town board. We were given a charge. We volunteered to do it and we accepted that charge. Um, there's no, I'm not operating from proof that we need zoning. I'm operating from a charge that the town. The elected representatives of the town asked us to do that. And um, as I have told you on many occasions in writing, when I take personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else. When I agree to do something, I consider. That I am only honorable if I follow what I have said that I will do. And I am not going to be dishonorable in my own mind and stop now. That would be up to the town board to ask us to stop and I don't think they're going to do that from what I've heard. Anybody else want to respond to any of that?
Uh, yeah, um, there is a question asked about uh, credentials related to uh, environmental protection. Um, I have uh, education and uh, work experience, so over thirty-five years of work experience. In environmental science and management. Uh, so I contribute that uh, knowledge and experience. To discussions in the zoning commission.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else? I think we've answered that. Is there anyone else? Oh, John Frazier, I think is the next.
John's next and John, are you able to unmute yourself?
I am unmuted, Mark.
Oh, great, great.
Hi, John.
Good evening, everybody. It is nice to be here, listening to this and seeing your presentation. Um, I have, do have a question, but I do want to start with a comment, which is simply to say thank you. I was part of the body that helped to point you. And we did that because we believed in the comprehensive plan and we believe this was a worthy conversation for our community to have. I stand by that. It is still an important and worthy conversation for our community to have. I want to also say to you, I appreciate the fact that you're listening so intently to the voices of dissent. They absolutely deserve to be heard. But I also am appreciative that you're continuing moving forward in doing the very, very thoughtful work. So thank you for that and thank you to the board as well for continuing those efforts. One of the things referenced in the law, and this may be ancillary, are communication towers and I noticed. That they reference Local Law Two of nineteen ninety-eight. And so my question is simply for parts of this draft that are referencing other laws that aren't necessarily central to zoning. Is the commission taking a look at those laws also and making any recommendations to the board? And I ask that because I'm somewhat aware that Local Law Two may need to be revised for modern times and dimensions of towers and things like that. Uh, so I'll mute and again, I thank you for the question and I thank you for uh, all of your work on this.
Thank you, John. Um, I can't remember, we've worked mostly on towers.
Well, I mean, Local Law Two is referred to cell towers, is it not?
Yeah, I think that's right.
We choose not, we've just referenced that and, and assumed that that was the law and we haven't really reviewed it.
Right.
And so uh. We should be taking a look at that. Um, and see if we have any. Further comments, but um, well, basically, consider that to be settled law. That's the church.
Yeah.
Uh, Jean, I have a couple of seconds and, and Bruce, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I believe the state has stepped in and. Told you exactly what we could do with cell towers at this point in time.
Okay, um.
So, so let, let me just add to just, so, so first, John, yeah, actually. Believe it or not, I read, I think, almost every single law that we have referenced in the zoning document and yes. Uh, as have many other commission members read either one, two or, or all. Uh, so we are looking at those. Um, and in some instances, we have indeed already written down notes like, oh, we should advise some revision of this one. That particular one is not one I think that we made that, that recommendation for now, but recognize that it is old. As Bruce says, there's a certain amount of federal and state preemption on, on tower citing. That law had certain guidelines in it. What the zoning law does though is, can add a layer of, of. Fine tuning on, you know, broad areas of the town where a tower could be. Um, and so I think there's some information is there in the um, use table. Uh, as to which zones a tower, but again, there is a certain amount of federal and state preemption. That's what I can tell you on that.
Uh, and I will make one final comment that you asked about some other laws and have we looked at them and we're, um. I'll give you an example. The, there's an adult business law, essentially meaning like strip clubs or, I don't know, whatever. Um, and we looked at that just, just to sort of see what it said as we were ra- making up our um. Tape, uses table. Uh, and it's actually very uh. Uh, mild. I mean, you could practically put a strip club next to a church in our community, so should you want to. Um, so uh, I think that as we pass this in, there are several things that we will. As we uh, as we uh, finish this product, that we will also say to the town about certain laws and. Uh, that may need updating, but. So that's all I have. Anyone else? Because, okay, there we are. Is there anyone else who has a, their hand up?
Uh, yeah.
Well, I can just add two seconds. The adult use law is a perfect example where zoning. I think we restricted it only to maybe the large commercial district or something, whereas the local law doesn't say anything much about. Other than saying distance away from certain buildings. The zoning law is actually able to restrict it to a certain portion of the town. So that's. It, they both work together is what I'm trying to tell John.
Yeah, I think that's true. Okay, I'm the next speaker.
Uh, Lori Morse and then Michael Brown. And Lori, I've asked you to unmute, see if you can do that. Great.
Yeah, this is actually John Morse on Lori's phone. Hi, so I just wanted to say that I, I think Bruno was spot on uh, tonight with uh, his comments. It was uh, very well put for a small town like Caroline and what our, our needs really are. And Jean, I, I heard you saying that uh, you were tasked with making a zoning plan. I think that the opposition from a lot of people is that the plan that we see. Doesn't reflect the town and it's, you've got a town that's so significantly divided on whether or not we even need zoning. And you've come up with this massive plan instead of an entry level, simple thing that probably wouldn't have gotten any. Or very little pushback. So that's, that's what, you know, maybe people were trying to iterate there. I think this whole thing is embarrassing to the people that are putting it together at, at some level, that we've missed the mark and. So, so, so far from the, you know, the significant and divide the town and it's pushing people apart. It's disgusting. Um, this is a town with almost zero residential or commercial growth in thirty years and if not for Boiseville, it would be zero growth. And only twenty-six percent residential growth in a hundred and ninety years. This is overkill. Um, we're proposing a hundred and thirty plus pages. The Constitution of the United States was four pages, now seventeen. And the Declaration of Independence was a hundred and twelve. It's, it's, it's an immense thing that could have been simple and a starting point. We use terms in your zoning proposal consistent with traditional. consistent with traditional character is used in there. This is the same verbiage that's been found to create segregation and hinder diversity. And zoning reform groups at all levels of government are looking to remove things like that. You know, people scoff when we say that zoning is elitist and creates segregation, but we've already seen it happen. You know, we've eliminated a Dollar General that sure, some people didn't want. But who are the people that could have used that? It's the underprivileged folks in our community who would have benefited the most. And there's zoning's first casualty of war, boom. And it hurts the people that that need the help the most. You know, people of all income levels
You have thirty seconds left.
Well, people of all income levels have shown an immense appreciation for our non-zoning effort. Have they come forward to thank you, you know, people that are really struggling? Have they come forward to thank the zoning commission? Thank you for more regulations? Thank you for making it harder to start a business or for bigger lots and higher taxes? I highly doubt it. You know, business and farmers don't want it. Ask them why. You know, in the words of our town supervisor, Mark Whitmer, and I quote, yes, zoning has a historically bad track record.
That's three minutes are up.
Thank you.
I will respond just to one thing about the massiveness and what you think that we could have as a simple law. Unfortunately, that is not what the state accepts. Zoning laws have to have certain verbiage in them to be approved at the state level, which it has to be, which has to happen. And so it, for instance, it requires a purposes statement. It requires the definitions. It requires a use tables. You can't publish a four or six page document. There's a difference between the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, which is not regulations and something which is a regulatory law. So I understand that people are concerned about the length, but the length is not what matters. It's what's in those use tables and the definitions that truly matters. I think that's the only thing I really feel like I want to respond to. Anyone else?
I've got a couple of points. Again, we hear this arguing about, you know, no growth in the town. The data is six, seven, eight new residences built every year. That's not zero. We can argue about whether that's large or small, but don't tell me it's zero. And that's excluding the Boiseville cottages. The other criticism was about the word is like a traditional character. You're dredging up something from a section that the zoning commission has not yet revised. And that's the kind of thing we're taking a very careful look at and have indeed removed already some of the more vague things that were in that kind of section. So until we're done revising it, you know, then you can criticize us, but yeah, we're still working on that part. And finally, the point has been made about a Dollar General. For example, this zoning plan does not disallow a Dollar General. It does restrict where it could locate in the town, but it would be allowed in the focus commercial district or could be allowed in Sladeville Springs. And if they were willing to build a little smaller or a very tall structure, they could go in Speedsville or Caroline Center. So, you know, it is not to prevent a Dollar General. It is to ask a Dollar General to make a Dollar General to locate near one of our existing commercial centers.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bill. Michael Brown, I think is the next speaker.
Hi, all. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Hi, Michael.
Hi. Yeah, just a few points I would like to make. First of all, I support the town board for encouraging the town to have this conversation about land use planning and for forming the zoning commission to explore the option of zoning for this purpose. I support the zoning commission and their efforts, and these are our neighbors and they are volunteers. And frankly, I think it's pretty remarkable what our neighbors are volunteering their time to do here. It's great. And I do support some form of zoning and what is currently proposed seems quite reasonable. Why do I support some form of zoning? I think we need to be proactive and not reactive and have a discussion as a town for how the town will grow in the future, especially regarding uses that may not be compatible with the town's rural character. And I don't think it makes any sense to do nothing, as some folks seem to be suggesting. I have a background in environmental science and that's what's framing my perspective here. I think we need to ensure that the town grows in a sustainable manner so that our natural resources are protected. That's our water, our air and our farmland. And do this for future generations. This is not about the past or past uses in the town, but it's rather planning for the future and threats that will be different in scope and magnitude to what we have experienced previously. If my family was to buy more land in Caroline, we would want to know what types of uses would be allowed on the land adjacent to ours. And I imagine most folks would, and that includes businesses too. And Bill, you addressed my point about did we eliminate a Dollar General? I don't think so. I think we're just attempting to plan intelligently where it can go. I do have a question about the water resources overlay. This seems to be something that folks are quite concerned about. I've heard the phrases, existing regulations are sufficient. This is too excessive. I happen to disagree and I'm address these concerns. First of all, what is the scope of existing regulations on our water resources? And what types of protections are missing with existing regulations that you are attempting to address with the water resources overlay? So thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
I guess I should say, I think Bill and Barb seem to have been speaking a lot about the water resources overlay, so I'm addressing my question to them.
Okay, yes. Bill and Barb, you have anything you want to say about that?
Barb, I'm happy to let you go first or take it or whatever, or if you want me to, I have a couple ideas.
Why don't you go first? And if I have anything to add, I will.
Okay, so one of the questions was what's the scope of existing protections of water resources? And so that varies. So some wetlands are large enough to be regulated by the DEC and the DEC regulates the actual wetland area plus a buffer, I think a hundred foot buffer around that. Other wetlands in the town, which are not designated as such by the DEC, not regulated by the DEC, are regulated by the federal government. Those, there are protections for the actual wetland area, but no buffer around them. And the water resources overlay does add a fifty foot buffer around those, at least we trigger review to take a look at whether that would impact that wetland. The flood zones, the town has a current flood zone law that is designed to keep flooding from getting worse or from buildings being harmed. Potential revisions, again, we have not talked about this part of the plan yet, so we'll see what the zoning commission finds decides. But the flood zone or portions of it may have more restrictive building conditions. Because right now there is no restriction on building in a flood zone period. And that means, you know, stuff can wash out of a flooded house and get into the streams and into water resources. And finally, the other big area is riparian areas, that is the areas adjacent to streams. And there are no protections for those currently. The DEC protects the bed and bank of a stream. And the bank can be as much as fifty foot from the center line of the stream, depending on what the slope contours are like. But what, again, the details are to be worked on. But the, you know, it is potentially possible for the zoning commission to, to say, no, we were going to add some protections for those areas adjacent to streams as a, as a environmental person familiar with water, I think you understand how important protecting the riparian zones are. So that's what I've, Barb, anything else you want to add?
I think the only thing that I would add to that, thanks, Bill, that was very thorough. The only thing that I would add that I don't think you mentioned was that the water resource overlay currently includes county mapped wetlands that aren't mapped by, by the state or federal. And so that is, you know, the county map wetlands with a buffer are included in our overlay. So that wouldn't be affected by state or federal regulations or oversight.
And I will just chip in, that's what I sort of glossed over. Barb, you're entirely right. But a wetland is a wetland and whether the federal government currently knows it is, if you do something to that wetland, I mean, they still regulate it. Whether or not the federal government has put on a map, the federal government regulates all wetlands that the DEC does not regulate. And the county mapping helps identify those and by putting those in the water resources overlay, then it's easier for landowners to realize where they have something where they might have to go get a federal permit for it because they actually do have a wetland on their property.
And that's been three minutes to answer that question.
Thank you. We have a couple of more hands up. I think Laser.
Great.
I don't know who Laser is, so. Mark will unmute you.
If I can find him again. We'll see. Okay.
Okay, you should be unmuted, Laser.
Hello, hello, can you hear me? Very good. Well, I was going to try and keep it as short as I can. I, of course, clicking unmute meant my notes disappeared. I just wanted to, well, thank everybody, the commission for a ton of of really difficult work. It must be hard to justify to the rest of your families. The, I wanted to thank Mike Brown, who spoke just before me or so for a wonderful explanation of why we need, oh, need is the wrong word, why it's valuable in many ways is what I really mean to the community to have some kind of zoning. And the other explanation that if you're going to have any zoning at all, it's going to be at least thirty or forty pages. A good combination as a technical person, I appreciate the heavy pieces of documentation, why they have to be heavy. Let's see. Oh, and I did want to thank, and I am very concerned for all the people who are putting a major effort opposing opposing this thing, putting it out there and, and expressing that they have concerns. And I find their concerns, because I can see the value in it. I'm very concerned about their concerns and I'd like to know more about their concerns. Being concerned about their concerns leads me to this. One simple thing that you could answer or help somehow is to make it as clear as possible, possibly right here with the screen share of where there are questions, as people have questions about specific parts of all of this that you've put together or general questions, that they can keep sending them to you and sharing them with us, perhaps, that you might be posting the questions and your answers. You might even be doing this already and you simply need to repeat it now. So people who are here know that, yes, if you have a problem with this, you have a problem with that. Let's get it in black and white and let's get a complete thoughtful, time consuming, if necessary, answer and question thing instead of the three minutes we got to deal with tonight. You probably just said three minutes.
No, you have thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, right. And I'm done, because I thought I was going to be quick and that obviously wasn't very quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, I'll start with answering the part about questions. Yes, on the town's website, it's clear that if you have a question, you should send it to me. You can use at Gmail. It's up there, enter the town clerk, so there's a record of that. On the website, there are also answers to more than two hundred and fifteen questions that have been asked. And they are, you can look them up by topic and it will tell you which area to go to. So there's a lot of answers to questions there. Now, a lot of those may refer to draft. And as you know, we've just finished revising that. But if you have questions after this or comments or a suggestion, you don't think that the borders are correct for Sladeville Springs, or you think that the acreage is wrong, or you don't like something, please send that and we, I share that. I don't know if we're going to have the energy, frankly, to answer a whole lot more questions unless they, they really rise to the, to the top. But we will certainly be considering them all. And I always share questions with and comments with everyone on the zoning commission. Anyone else have anything from that?
Really great where to send those comments?
Yes, you can send them to, I think Barb Newt has just put it up in the, in the chat. Caroline.org zoning commission, it's on that page. And and my email is on that, Jean McPeters. I also want to say on the, on that page, on the town, on town website's main page, at the bottom of the left-hand column, there is a teal colored square in which you can put your email and then you get notifications all the time from the town. So some of you may have gotten four emails from us in the last week about explaining various things that are in this second draft. Put your name there, you'll get more information. Thank you. Anyone else? I think we have Cyrus, is that next?
Yes, Cyrus is next and he's unmuted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm in favor of zoning because I think it's important for protecting the town that we all love living in. I have family in Toronto and I am familiar with areas beyond Toronto that used to be totally rural for decades. And now they've suddenly gotten swallowed up and they are blast suburbia. And you can go for miles in their suburbia. So you know, the fact that something had a certain character for a hundred years is not a guarantee that it's going to stay that way. So I'm very much in favor of zoning. That said, it's clear that there's, you know, a lot of opposition to zoning in the town. So this may go against the perfectionist among the zoning commission, but I think you, you should consider the possibility of sort of figuring out what are the most important things. And maybe not going for the best possible plan, but the most, getting that plan with the most important stuff. Anyway, that's a suggestion that you can or cannot take up. And also I hope that, you know, the zoning plan will place the minimum burden on regulatory burden on people who want to do various things with their land. So as an example, if somebody is in an ag district but is renting out their place to say a lighting shop and the renter leaves and they want to rent to a new person, I hope that, you know, it'll be almost automatic that that person can rent, provided that the new use does not, you know, create a lot of traffic or other stuff that was not there in the original. And finally, I would like to really second what Lizzy Abbott said. You guys have put in an enormous amount of work. You don't get paid for it. And you, you get all this abuse from, from a segment of the population, which is very sad. So thank you very much. You're amazing. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Cyrus. Let me assure you that I have never let perfection have almost anything to do with my life. I'm a, I'm a big believer in it will be fine on the day. And I don't think that there would be anything in our regulations that if a renter for a particular use was moving out and another use that was permitted in the use table was coming in.
I think we need to look at that. I remember where we stood on that because that question has come up.
Okay.
And we need to look at the grandfathering clauses, but that's in the future.
And that is, and the grandfathering clauses are in the next part, but if, I mean, if you're thinking like a lighting shop and something somewhat similar was to come in, I can't imagine that it would be a problem, but we will definitely look at that. And we are certainly hearing people say they wouldn't want that to happen. So wouldn't want a hindrance to be there. So we are hearing that. Is there any other question?
A quick two, two seconds for me, because Cyrus made the point about, you know, making this as unburdensome as possible. And, you know, I know there will those out there who will scoff at this, but that is indeed exactly what the zoning commission is working on doing. As we go through, that's why we've been adding uses, deleting this. We strongly consider each time, what is the public good and benefit versus what is the burden on residents of the town? And to add on to that, you know, a statement was made earlier, I think by Bruno, how this is going to vastly increase the cost of building a house in the town. You know, one of the things that has a P in it, that does not have a review by the review board, is building a single family residence or a two-family residence. That is, it'll be no different than it is now. And there are indeed, as we go through and have eliminated a number of the, you know, that does any design pieces aren't, you know, we've already cut out some that potentially could have applied to, to single family residences. We have no more interest in that than those opposed to zoning do. So I just want to say that indeed, I think a goal of keeping this unburdensome is shared by everyone on this committee.
Thank you. Let's see. The next two hands up have already spoken. I think we have room, time to hear from one of them. And the first one is Bruno. So Bruno, we will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Let me respond to a couple of things that Bill said. Number one, this notion that it isn't going to drive up the cost of a single family home or or a two family home is simply not true. When you are requiring three acre zoning on average, that will have a monumental impact on the cost of a home. Number one. Number two, in terms of the census, I hear this all the time that somehow the census in two thousand twenty was wrong. In the town of Dryden, the census showed that they lost over five hundred people in the last ten years. Virtually, and and I own a lot of rental property, as you know. And I I didn't lose any residents who are Cornell grad students at Boiseville cottages during two thousand twenty. They all stayed. And so I don't think the census is wrong. The other thing is, in terms of housing and your focus on how many new homes have been built each year, you're not taking into account the number of new, of existing homes that are rotting into the ground and being discarded and no longer in use. So I think that you got to look at that. Secondly, or third, I would say, yes, single family homes are allowed and two families are allowed out of right. But that simply highlights the point about the segregation and discrimination that I'm talking about. Nowhere, nowhere in your law as currently formed is multifamily allowed out of right in any zone. Every zone requires a special use permit. And if you know anything about a special use permit, that can be, if you want it to be, a pretty high bar. And the neighbors are always going to oppose rental. That's almost universal. And this is the reason why John talked about it. How states are taking it into their hands to prevent exclusionary zoning by local municipalities. To say in Oregon and I believe California now have passed laws and New York's considering it. Anywhere in a single family home can be built, up to four units of multifamily can be built. That is how the discrimination and the segregation will end up seeping in and coming in. I think it's a bad road to go down. Housing, housing of all types should be allowed out of right. And that is the only way you're going to protect against segregation and discrimination.
That's three minutes, your three minutes are up.
Thank you, Bruno. That's a very interesting point, which actually no one has brought to us before. So thank you very much for saying that. Bill, you want to speak to that?
Jean, if you finish, and then I think Nan may want to contribute as well, but so, you know, Bruno, there's this thing about the three acre minimum immigrant or average three acre. Let's sit down sometime, happy to talk it through with you. I just don't see it because people can still divide off a small lot. There, I looked at every split done in, you know, land split, division, subdivision done in the last fifteen years. There was one that actually would have wouldn't, would have conformed to the three acre average size that we're specifying now out of hundreds of them. So it's just not happening. So specifying a, an average losses of three acres isn't going to change what's been happening in the town. So I just don't see how that's going to increase the the housing cost. But I'd have to sit down with you sometime and go through that. And I, the other two points I wanted to say, you know, in terms of the multi-use housing, that already requires review by the review board, as far as I understand, our subdivision review law, and it goes through site plan review. That's one of the triggers in the site plan law. But there is no intention, I mean, you know, a special use permit, the use is still allowed. You are saying that, well, that bar could be set so high, it's effectively prohibiting the use. My guess is that would definitely be challengeable in accord law, but that's where I'd like, maybe Nan could give us a little wisdom from what's happened in other communities.
Nan?
It's true that in some places, the bar is set so high that it's just impossible for multifamily developments to actually be built. I don't disagree with that. But I, I also, I think the recognition is that a multifamily development is not the same thing in terms of its impact on the land, and that's what we're trying to get at is the performance of, you know, how all of these things fit in in the community and on the landscape and and depending on size, you know, there are impacts to density, whether it's in a multifamily or some sort of single family development. You know, we look at traffic, we look at impacts on a whole range of things. And so the, you know, yeah, I agree that if you're, if you set the bar so high with so many restrictions that multifamily can be difficult to manage, but their commercial uses, as Bill said, they're almost always treated as a commercial use and reviewed with site plan review to make sure that they function in a way that is fits into the rest of whatever's going on in that area. In a, like, a special use permit, and I I always say this wherever, a special, a use that requires a special use permit is a permitted use. And people who make it seem that a special use permit is a bad thing or a difficult thing doesn't understand how it should be working, in my opinion. And I think that's the the direction that the zoning commission has been looking at. And they're going to be getting to the special use section a little later on, but it it's not that these are bad or not wanted. These are permitted, desired uses that have certain characteristics that need extra review to make sure they fit into wherever they're being proposed. And that's how I believe we should be looking at it.
And that's three minutes to answer that question.
Thank you. We only have a few minutes before nine o'clock and I'm going to use those to wrap this meeting up and to invite people to come on Thursday. First, I want to thank again the members of the zoning commission. I especially want to thank everyone who attended this evening and who asked a question and who gave their opinions. We please send us specifics. It is very useful to have specifics as we're trying to go forward. We will be doing this again on Thursday evening. That will be in person at the Brookton Dale Fire Department. I want to thank the Brookton Dale Fire Department for letting us use the hall. And that will be from six thirty to eight thirty PM that evening. I very much hope that we will have the same cordiality and respect for each other that evening. I look forward to seeing you all then. Again, we put up, that evening when you come, there'll be a list. If you want, if you think you're going to want to ask a question, please sign your name on the list. And it will be the same rule, the three minutes and the three minutes, we're going to do this, a repeat of the beginning of this that we perhaps where I won't flub so much, possible, maybe not. And we'll see you all then. Thank you very much, everyone. Good evening.